Good morning and welcome to our Minnehaha County Commission Meeting for April 22, 2025. I'll call the meeting to order. And note for the record that we have three commissioners physically present, one telephonically present, and Commissioner Kipli is absent today. Before I get started, remind everybody to silence their cellphones. And if you're going to make any public comments today, we do need your information for public record. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to our routine business, I'd look for a motion to approve our agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in... Oh, no. Call the roll.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, personnel actions, bills to be paid, et cetera. Anybody from the public like to comment on our consent agenda? All right. Moving on then, commissioners, any comments or anything that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. I do want to note that out of our bills to be paid, like 84% of our 3.6 million is kind of passed through money goes to the state licensing fees, that type of thing. So, and a good chunk to facilities, maintenance, and public safety. So, a lot of money, but hopefully most of it comes back to us. All right. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business, a public hearing and second reading on zoning text amendment number 2506 to amend the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and to add accessory dwelling units, ADUs regulations. Kevin?
Yes, good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. Yes, during the comprehensive plan update for 2024 comprehensive plan, staff met with a task force to consider ways to address housing needs within the county. One of the housing directives that came out of that staff, that task force and the comprehensive plan adoption was incorporate accessory dwelling units into the ordnance. The ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission on March 24, 2025, where it had a public hearing and it was unanimously recommended for approval. I do have like a little presentation, I'll maybe scroll through to show kind of the, what the ordinance and parts are that we're going to be adopting. So accessory dwelling units, part of the reason why we looked at accessory dwelling units is it has some advantages for the county, including that it's something that we can maintain our existing building eligibility's that we have throughout the county. We don't have to add new programs, sort of thing. It just works with what's there. ADUs are adaptable for families that can say need extra help, or maybe even for rental income is another way they can utilize accessory dwelling units, either temporary or long term. ADUs are also single-family residential compatible. They are already existing in the county in several different places in the next bullet point there, because many of them are there prior to the ordinance being adopted, as well as there's the tendency where somebody will build a shed and then build something in the shed after, or separate their house after a building permit is pulled and completed. So there are known, or a few likely places that have already converted some of them, and we can capture some of those into the ordinance now. So one of the things will be adding the definition to the accessory dwelling unit as a subordinate residential unit on the same property as a larger property, primary single-family dwelling. If you look at some of the other ways that they are called, they can be called a carriage house, guest house, backyard apartment. Right here, you can see some of the different styles that have been used to build accessory dwelling units between detached, and these are all attached. And then the ordinance breaks down all the units together. They will require a conditional use permit to approve, but then each individually, whether it's attached or detached, will be a little bit different. But both will also require that they be platted on one platted lot, specifically platted as a means to prevent the accessory dwelling unit to be separated from the primary dwelling at a later time, because with that plating requirement, then it would be caught in plat review that says, okay, this is not compatible with what was approved before. No additional driveway access on the property as well. So for attached accessory dwelling units, we're looking at a 75% size of the primary dwelling, so that will be a smaller accessory dwelling, and it must meet the same setbacks. For detached, we're looking at a 50% main floor area of the primary dwelling. So again, it's going to be smaller. And that, the setbacks are going to be a little different, where if it's in the rear yard, we are looking to allow seven feet side yard setbacks and seven feet rear yard And that's kind of what that looks like. So that's the ordinance in a nutshell. This is the second reading for the zoning text amendment. So this is a public hearing and requires action. The Board of Commissioners may vote to amend, approve, or deny the proposed zoning ordinance, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, we'll take public comment first. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right. Turn it back to the commission. Questions? Action?
Thank you, Chair. Oh.
Commissioner Benega, we'll start with you.
Yes. Frankly, I'm very strongly supportive of this. All the years I was in the older adult care business, if you will, this was a topic of discussion, not only in our area, but it's been a topic of discussion around the country. This is a way to meet a significant need, where families need some support, can't always find it in the communities that they're living in, and frankly, it's less expensive and gives that family an opportunity to, we'll call them caregiver unit, or whatever you would like. All those definitions that Kevin gave make sense. I think it's an opportunity for family enrichment, if you will. And the other thing that is extremely important is, I know for a fact that there were people looking for alternative housing units and couldn't find those kinds of units up to two or three years down the road, because they were either occupied, or they would have to find something that was significant difference or distance away from where they currently live. So I think this is an excellent opportunity for our county to support the family process. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Heisee, Leinberg, sorry about that.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to also express support, and I've not heard any negative comments about any of this, but I have heard quite a bit of positive. And then, just thinking about what you had mentioned about some existing ADUs already out in the county, will those be required to go through the CUP process?
Yes, at this time, they would be required to go through the process to comply, yes.
So a homeowner who might find themselves in this situation should reach out to you to get that started, or do we reach out to them?
It might be a little bit of both. It would be best if they reached out to us, and if we do hear about something, we can reach out to them and say, okay, neighbor or bird came by and said that you may have a unit, and we can get this in compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Heisee.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to echo both Commissioner Benega and Leinberg's comments, and just add that I myself have also only heard overwhelming support for the implementation of ADUs. However, I did hear from one particular constituent, some concerns about the ADUs. After listening to his concerns and also looking through the specifics of our ordinance, I believe our ordinance and the CUP process that individuals have to be going through, it'll cover all those concerns. For example, parking was a concern, but per item number six, it does mention that two additional off-street parking spaces must be provided for the ADU. It also mentions the fact that in point three, the ADU must be built on permanent frost protective footings, which would essentially remove the possibility of a temporary structure or camper. Other parts of the country, they haven't had this stipulation within their ordinance, and it's led to overcrowding and less than desirable conditions on individuals' property. So I think the ordinance is in a good shape. I think the Planning Commission has done a great job, and I'll be voting in support of this, and I'd actually make a motion to approve the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm going to, a couple of things, just comment first of all, that the percent of the main floor, whether it be attached at 75 or 50%, those are maximums, not minimums.
Correct.
Any restrictions on the use? Can it be used for like short-term rental, that type of thing?
So that was part of our discussion, and if something like a short-term rental became desire of the property owner, it would be a two-part conditional use. So you'd have to go through a conditional use permit to allow the ADU, and then a second one to do a short-term rental in the unit.
Okay. So it would require a conditional use permit to be a short-term rental?
Yep, and it would be a separate conditional use permit.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? All right. This is a public hearing, so the order should have been proponents, opponents, and rebuttal. I don't know if we had any opponents to this ordinance. Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to it? Out of order, because I already have a motion and a second, but we're going to go anyway. All right. Call the roll.
Heisee?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. So, public hearing and second reading on zoning text amendment 2507 to amend the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to change the transfer of public, I'm sorry, of building eligibility regulations. Kevin?
Yes, so this zoning ordinance amendment also came out of that densities task force for the envisioned 2045 comprehensive plan. So currently, our building eligibility's that is Minnehaha County, generally speaking, is one eligibility for every 40 acres, plus one eligibility for every lot of record. Those building eligibility's are transferable from one property to another if the properties are contiguous to each other and under the same ownership. There has been a number of conditional use permit applications where property owners have gone through temporary purchase agreements and such to get around that same ownership requirement, and this would be a means to remove that same ownership requirement from that to allow that transfer to happen between two property owners. We are going to leave the contiguous property owners, part of it, or the, excuse me, the contiguous properties together, because in our discussion as a task force, townships with, that are far out, that have few building eligibility's, and not want to lose all their building eligibility's to a township that is closer to Sioux Falls, and vice versa. The townships closer to Sioux Falls didn't want to have an influx of more building eligibility's that can handle by bringing them in from outside. So having some distance requirement to that contiguous properties will limit the distance where they can be transferred. It will still take a conditional use permit to transfer, so that would be remaining in there. The Planning Commission did hear this on March 24, 2025, and unanimously recommended approval. Again, this is a second reading of the text amendment, so the, in a public hearing, so the Board of County Commissioners may vote to amend, approve, or deny the text amendment. Is there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Kevin. So I don't have to call myself out of order again. I will take proponents to this tech, to this amendment, to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance. Anybody here as a proponent? Anybody here as an opponent? No rebuttal required. Commission, I will turn it over to you for questions or action.
I have a question, Chair.
Commissioner Leinberg?
Thank you. Kevin, the contiguous properties, does that do right-of-way, public right-of-way divide that, or what divides?
Sure. The public right-of-way is not considered part, it would be considered contiguous if they're across the right-of-way. It's also contiguous, we have used that term to work on a point. So if the properties touch at a corner, that that would be considered contiguous as well.
So what will prevent the movement of the eligibility's into different townships?
There may be some moving from one township to another, but it's not going to be miles, because then you're only dealing with two property owners still versus a property owner from Buffalo Township way in the northwest to Mapleton, because that contiguous part is not going to be compatible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is more of a general question, but do you think this change will at all affect the value of building eligibility's?
I don't necessarily think it will. It will release some building eligibility's that are being held now, where farmers do not want to put it on their own land. So perhaps if it makes more available, there might be some effect, but generally speaking, it still have to have that willing seller, so.
And just to follow up, for those residents in the county that are concerned about maintaining the rural character of the county, excuse me, what would you say in response to allay their concerns?
So, a couple of things. The comprehensive plan for some time now has actually encouraged clustering of building eligibility's. So if one property owner already owns, say, a half a section of land, they can take those eligibility's, say, eight of them, and put them into one place and make a little development. That is helpful for the developer, one, because now they have a space where all clustered. You can have one access onto the road. And it's also helpful for the farmer, because if they're spraying pesticides, they only have one wind direction to worry about, where if they have the building eligibility scattered and developed throughout the township, that wind can cause a problem. So yeah, I think that this will maintain that density zoning as well, so the number of potential dwellings is not going to increase.
Yeah, I think it's my understanding as well, that if there's four building eligibility's or buildings being erected, anything above four requires a conditional use permit for that project to go forward?
So, any transfer will require a conditional use permit. If there's more than four, then it goes through another process, which would be the subdivision preliminary planning process, and that's going to be where the applicant will lay out where the roads are going to be, or how the access is going to work, where drainage might go, that sort of thing.
And it seemed to me that it was a fairly cumbersome process as it stands right now, and this is a way to make the process a little bit more smooth, because as I understand, if two individual owners wanted to transfer, one would have to buy the others and then transfer back at some point, so this would just stop that cumbersome process, more or less.
Correct. Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second by Heisee. Call the roll.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on. Authorize the State's Attorney to apply for the fiscal year 26 South Dakota Department of Public Safety Victim Services Stop P. Grant. Daniel Hager, State's Attorney. Good morning.
I was going to introduce myself, but you did a better job than I would have. Thank you. Pleasure to be here. This is the third time, been in front of this commission asking for the same approval. It's a year-to-year funding, so happy to do it again. I guess just briefly, these are funds that come from the federal government through Department of Public Safety. They're targeting for law enforcement partners to use to help those agencies. This is something that we've used, I think successfully so far. Kami Pfeifer is here in the corner. She's doing a really nice job. She is doing exactly what we were hoping to see this grant funding help us do. She has started taking more cases with victim services. Last year, stood here, said she had 116 cases that previous year. Have the pleasure of saying she has more than doubled her work. She has 308 cases. This is where grants can really work well. I think this is the best way that they're used, as you're building those programs, as you're seeing what's successful, what's working, using those funds to build that. So the fact that she's sitting here, has served over 300 victims last year. She's part of a community response team with local law enforcement partners, with groups in our community that are combating that intimate partner violence. They're having monthly meetings, looking for ways that we can better serve victims in our community as a whole, not just in our office. She has worked on an ODAHA risk assessment tool for individuals who are coming into custody on intimate partner violence. It's a new tool that law enforcement is using, trying to gauge history, prior acts of violence, and trying to figure out if that person represents a lethality risk to that victim. So she's done work on that training, is making sure that everyone's up to speed on that. Has a lot of things going on, is doing them very well. This grant application, it can get a little confusing. Ultimately, that number looks like 90,000. The request from DPS is for 68,000. We have that 25% match, which is about $22,000, $23,000. But I think that's money well spent by the county. It lets us hopefully keep a, what I really think is a rising star in the office. She was someone who had interned in the office a few years ago, was definitely someone we wanted to bring in, was fortunate to be able to apply for this grant and get that. So happy to have her in the office and hope that she can continue working for a long time. But I am asking the commission for authorization to reapply for a third year for this grant. That was something that Commissioner Kipli had asked me a couple of years ago, is this something that would be, have the potential to be ongoing? We talked about, a couple of years ago, Pennington County had had one that they'd had for about a decade, and so certainly we're seeing at least two years of support from this grant, hoping that that can continue for at least another year.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item?
I would make a motion to approve the grant request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize the chair to sign a software agreement between Minnehaha County and Justice Tech's Inc. for the purchase and implementation of a case management program for the Public Defender's Office at a cost of $28,000. Morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. We're seeking authorization to enter into an agreement with Justice Tech for the purchase of Justice Tech's. It's a program that allows the Public Defender's Office to utilize their software, that's a cloud-based program, that will streamline our ability to review evidence. It will allow training, utilization of their program, and it is a solution to some of the problems that we've experienced in the last few years. We received discovery from the State's Attorney's Office, lots of videos, body-worn cameras, jail calls, interrogation, and witness interviews. It comes over every day as part of our review of the evidence in the case. We have investigators, paralegals, and attorneys who have to review that evidence as part of our duty to effectively represent our clients. Sometimes it can be hours and hours and hours of video. This program will integrate with our existing case management program and help reduce the time that is spent organizing these videos. And eight-hour videos will essentially be uploaded into this cloud-based program and take an eight-hour video and reduce it to a transcript within 10 minutes. It also allows the attorneys to search for specific words like Miranda or names of certain people. So it will also allow the attorneys to share the videos, or have only the investigator review the video, and then they can share it with other members of that work group. So it will definitely allow us to be more efficient with our time, reducing the amount of time that we actually have to expend on our cases, and so that we can meet the needs of our clients and work our cases much more efficiently. We're asking the commission to allow us to expend $28,000 from our budget to implement this software, and it will include this one-time licensing fee for this year. I assume that it is based on the number of users. It will include our attorneys, our investigators, and our paralegals, and it will also support the needs as we will need training, any issues that might come up over the next year. So we're simply asking the commission to allow us to enter into this agreement so that we can get started on using this program.
Thank you, Tracy. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commission?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Leinberg, second by Benega. I do have a quick question, or a comment and a question, probably. Sounds like a great time saver, as far as eight hours down to 10 minutes, is that, wow. So yeah, and I, great use of technology to make everybody's job better and life easier, I guess. The 28,000, you had that budgeted?
We did not have it included in our data processing budget as a line item. We do believe with our other professional services budget that we would have sufficient monies in that line item to cover this specific expenditure.
Good to hear. All right. Additional comments? Call the roll, please.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, we have an annual presentation from Human Resources. Morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Thanks, Trish. It's my pleasure to be in front of you today to talk a little bit about our office and the different items that we've been looking into over the past year. As a start, just to recap, and you heard some about this last year, but our goals for the 2024 year entering 2025, of course, was to be involved in that compensation and benefit study. You've heard a lot about that. That is an ongoing goal. As just a reminder, this was a very comprehensive project. It looked at salaries, it looked at position structures, and it's looking at benefits, too. As I mentioned, ongoing, we look forward to seeing what potential we have for implementing that within the next upcoming weeks. The other major focus for our office over the past year has been improving onboarding and new employee orientation procedures. This has been a largely manual process for us in the past, where we're engaging with the staff that we're hiring through telephone calls, emails, having them complete forms. We were able to implement some software to do that electronically, but this new program that we've implemented over the past year has really made that whole process more efficient. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, just briefly touching on bullet three and four, that we're also still looking at internal HR procedures, and of course, we're always focusing on how we can attract and retain qualified staff. But I did want to give you a quick glimpse of what our new onboard portal looks like. So this is an example of what employees who've received offers would be seeing, and very similar to what our staff would receive. So we send new candidates a link- new candidates a link. They receive a welcome message from the commission, and then we have a checklist of items that need to be completed. This is a world better than the process that we've been using over the past, well, forever. It allows us to make sure that we're tracking the right items that we need for each position in electronic way. We can monitor completion of that as individuals go online and complete those forms. It has an automated process for reminders for both us and our new employees who are coming on board. It also provides a method for them to complete some of those essential HR forms in a secured way, including the I-9, and it allows us to go through the e-verification process with the federal government as well. So it's been a huge help to our office. I can take absolutely no credit for this project whatsoever, so a big thank you to the group of people that I work with who have made this possible. For the upcoming goals, I mentioned the job evaluation and compensation study will remain a focus for this upcoming year. We're really happy with where we've come so far with the onboarding software, but there's potential to go ahead and optimize that further with some of the features that we haven't quite accessed, and also departments can use it for their onboarding procedures. So we look forward to maybe working with a couple of departments to use that. I have one bullet down here that's enhanced recruitment outreach strategies. What I really mean by that is, any type of ad that you see formatted predominantly comes out of the creative marketing ability of the HR staff. And we recognize that that could be at times somewhat limited. So we would like to possibly engage with a couple of firms to see about maybe improving our visual presence when we're posting positions. As I've mentioned, recruitment and retention are always key programs and projects. You're going to hear me talk about that every year. For the past year, what we've really done with recruitment, again, that job evaluation compensation study will be critical if we're going to attract and retain qualified staff. I've talked a little bit about the onboard software. We have, through our current recruitment software system, an electronic requisition approval process that we've been using. So as positions come open, we make sure that we're only filling authorized positions. Also want to touch on a couple of awards that have been received over the past year. We were lucky to be the recipient of NeoGov Insight Award. That was an award given to us by our recruitment software vendor in recognition of our staff's ability to truly use that to its full effectiveness. And then the county was also awarded the SHRM, which is the Sioux Empire Society of Human Resource Management Workplace Excellence Award for Community Impact over the past year. We continue to look at our social media presence. We've been contacting all staff when we have announcements or vacancies, just to hope that they'll share the word with people that they know. And we continue to make sure that we're not working with community entities and resources when we have postings. For retention, again, we consider that job evaluation and compensation study critical in that area. You know that the commission has approved and supported, thankfully, that recruitment bonus for law enforcement positions, which we think has had a positive impact. Last year, you heard me talk a lot about our employee assistance program. One thing that we're trying to do is make sure that employees are aware of that benefit, so we're sending out at least quarterly announcements about that. We continue to offer several training sessions each year, some geared towards management, some geared for all staff in a variety of areas, whether that be wellness, customer service, or maybe personal items, like dealing with difficult situations or difficult conversations. As you've heard me talk, in the last few years, as I've been up here, each year our office has been conducting a workforce review since shortly after I started. This allows us to see trends and significant changes in the workforce so that we can be ahead of the curve, to the extent that we can, at least. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I think it's important that you've got at least a glimpse of some of the areas that we look at. But as a brief summary of things that I see when I look through these, is that there's been conservative growth in our authorized positions. If you go back to 2021 to now, excluding those 14 positions for UC3 that are currently unfilled, it's been about 5% growth in positions. So not a lot, and most of those have been in the law enforcement area. Thankfully, there has been some improvement in turnover. You remember in 2022, we had a huge spike, and we were able, we think, to effectively control that, and we're seeing those numbers come down. That five-year lookback doesn't give you the full picture, though. According to that, we're maybe 1% of where we were before, but if you go back to, you know, 2010, 2015, our total turnover was closer to 8% to 10%. So ideally, we'd like to see us get back to those levels. Again, maybe 1% doesn't seem like a lot. That's six people, doesn't seem like a lot. But when you consider the turnover cost of, a conservative estimate of $40,000, that cost can add up pretty quickly. The number of our searches still remains high. That's partially related to that turnover. The good news is we are seeing some improvement in the number of applications per posting. Some other things that I see that I think we just need to be aware of, and you've heard me talk about that inverted bell curve, and some of those charts really shows that. 43% of our staff have been here for less than four years. And about, I say 18%, because I round it up, but it's 17.5% were hired since January of last year alone. And I look at that and I think, okay, well, we know that we've experienced turnover in the law enforcement area. So I was curious and went back and polled that out as a percentage of sheriff's office employees versus non-sheriff's office employees. And I think the statistic shows you clearly that this is not an issue isolated to the sheriff's office. 17.6% of sheriff's employees are new since January, 17.3% of non-sheriff's office. The other thing that you heard Victoria talk about last month in her presentation about the compensation study was some of our demographics on where our workforce is at in comparison to retirement. So here's your other side of that inverted bell curve. You've got about 14% of your staff who are age 55 or older. I took a look at 50-year-old older, and that number goes up to 24%. So I think we need to be aware that we are in a unique position, that we have a lot of new employees, and we're also on the cusp possibly of losing another portion to retirement. I went back and compared charts from, again, that five-year lookback only gives you part of the picture, right? I went back and compared that six to 10 years of service area, because I think that's when we're hitting, you know, well-developed employees who understand their role. I think that's an area for us to focus on. There's been a significant decline in the number of employees with six to 10 years of service from a decade ago till now. So something for us to watch. When I think about the county overall, I think this is a really great place to work. You know, they talk about this generation really wanting to fill purpose in their roles. There's no doubt you're going to get a sense of purpose here. We are providing essential services to the community. We're making sure people are protected. We're maintaining bridges and roads, so clearly you're going to have purpose here. Another great thing about employment at the county is it offers some level of stability and work-life balance, although some people who maybe are listening to me now might not always recognize that work-life balance. And I think we've done a nice job as an organization of taking a look at that turnover and trying to make sure we've had a positive impact. But we still are losing 60% of our employees citing pay or opportunity as the reason for leaving. So something for us to be aware of, and as we're looking at that recruitment, or I'm sorry, that compensation study, the benefit study, something we'll want to be careful to make sure that whatever is maybe considered for implementation is really hitting some of those key drivers. Overall, I want to say thank you again to the group of people I work with. I am blessed to work with a wonderful group of talented individuals who make my life easier every day. And I want to thank the commission, too, for their support, particularly of taking a look at that compensation and benefit study for our employees. Do you have any questions?
Before we go to questions, we'll go to public comment. Anybody? Quick question, Carrie. How long have you been in your role as HR director?
Oh, that's a really, really good question. What, 18 years?
18 years?
18 years.
Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Just if I could echo that, the thanks for the work that you do and for the training that you offer to commissioners who maybe are not, like myself, who are not up to speed on all these things. I really appreciate the time that you've spent. And I also heard a brag about you and the time that you helped with Lincoln County back, I don't know how many years ago that was, but it was just recently brought up and the excellent work that you provided when they were beginning with their HR department, from what I understand.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This is the presentation. No action required. Moving on to a second presentation today is the Highway Department Annual Presentation by our newly minted Highway Superintendent. Good morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioner. Jacob Mars, Highway Department. Here to kind of give an overview of 2024 and a look ahead at what we're planning for 2025. First, we'll start out with some emerging needs and issues. We just finished up our Phase 1 building, still working some kinks out of it, and we are looking at Phase 2. Phase 2 would be a structure directly east of the existing building, which would replace four existing structures on the campus that are aging. And we still have a few pieces of equipment outside that we'd like to get in, out of the weather. Rising pavement management costs, we gave a report last year from our pavement management study that showed we need to be spending about an extra million dollars a year on pavement management to keep our road conditions where they currently are without going backwards. DOT state detours, we've had quite a number of DOT detours on our county highways in the last few years. A lot of oversized, overweight loads that do quite a bit of damage. We do have agreements with the state in order to make sure our roads are left in as good of condition when they're done, but it's just, there's more traffic on our roads because the DOT has been detouring. This summer specifically would be the Brandon Exit Project that they're working on. Annexation of right-of-ways, we've had some municipalities in the area that will annex up to the right-of-way but not annex the right-of-way. That's an issue I'd like to work on this summer, talking with local municipalities and just trying to come up with a game plan moving forward for annexation. It's something the South Dakota Association of Highway Superintendents is working on as well. They might appear in peer with a couple of bills next year to try to address this issue. Looking for possibly some additional funding to help the bottom line at the end of our five-year plan. We'll get to the next couple of slides, and then, we had a little bit of flooding last June that we'll highlight here. The Phase 2 building that we're looking at is, this is our existing structure. Phase 2 would go directly to the east with a wide enough radius so we could make a corner to get in that end door. The buildings it would replace would be an existing Quonset, was the first structure on the Highway Department campus built in the 1940s. This structure, building number four, I believe, was an aircraft hangar from the airport that got moved out here. And then this small structure is our weed and pest building, which, with the amount of chemicals that we have, we need to do containment. So we'd be looking to add a small portion on this building to add containment in. We have about 1.8 million in our budget, but would be looking for some additional funding to move forward, if that's a possibility. Pavement management costs, originally, our playbook has had 3.1 million for about the last six years to do pavement management, and that's just chip seal, crack seal, micro-surfacing, and overlays on our road to maintain them in their current condition. That cost has gone up slightly, so that shows up in the budget here. The green is our budgeted revenue for '25, '26, '27, '28, '29, and '230. And then the blue is the expenditures. You can see with our current trend line here, we end up in the negative, a couple million dollars by '230. I would say that years one and two, and about half of '27, those projects are relatively set, and I'm fairly confident in that budget. But out here, we have a federal bridge improvement program grant, which costs about $3 million. That's included in our expected expenses and revenues. And with other ongoing problems that we have with our roadways, they're aging. Some of them need to get replaced to improve sight distance standards. That ends up bringing us down below what we have available funding. So I would be proposing increasing the wheel tax, which was last increased in 1995, when asphalt prices were $16.15. Today's asphalt prices are $68 a ton, and our wheel tax hasn't changed over the last 30 years. So I would be proposing to increase the wheel tax. Right now, it's $4 a wheel for four wheels, up to $16. And state law allows us to move it to $5 a wheel for a $60 max for an average passenger car with four wheels. That increase is seen by each person as going to be $4 a vehicle. But this $60 max would allow us to tax up to 12 wheels, which would really target the commercial vehicles, the heavy haulers that do a majority of the damage to the roadways, just with the amount of weight that they put on the road and stress they put on the road. It does a significant more amount of damage than what a passenger Some spring flooding. So around Juneteenth last year, we had a week where the spigot just wouldn't shut off, and we had some significant flooding throughout the county. This picture in the upper left-hand corner is actually where we had a bunch of bales that got lodged on the upstream of a bridge, and we had to get out there with an excavator to free them so we could keep water moving through the structure. We had several roads that were underwater that had to be closed. Overall, we spent, oh, 2,600 hours, man-hours in the field repairing roadways, fixing bridges, cleaning out debris, or just putting up traffic control to manage the closures project. And between FEMA and federal aid, we should receive about $300,000 in aid for the work that we did to repair roads out there. Our maintenance staff spends a lot of time outside of the regular working hours, either early, early in the morning plowing snow, or through the weekends. This flood is a good example, where they were out there cutting down trees, putting up barricades, taking bales out of bridges to keep the roads open and operable for people to get to where they're going. Looking forward to the next couple of years here. We have our road and bridge construction that we do every year. The BIP grant would be Bridge Improvement Program. That's a federal grant. The current administration has that under review, so working with our DC legislators to try to figure out where that grant is and what the likelihood of it moving forward. Working with the DOT Safety Office, there's a big grant. There's the safety grant to fix a curve north of Colton on a county correction line. That's about $2 million. So we will move forward trying to work with Lake County to partner in improving that, and that is potentially a 90-10 grant with the state where we have 10% of the cost. They currently have it budgeted for 2028. We will keep applying for big grants as they are available. And then over the last year, we implemented EAM, which is a work order management system. It applies the work man-hours costs that we do to bridges and road sections. As required by state law, we have to track how much time and effort we are spending fixing things out in the county. Last year's construction, we did 39 miles of new surfacing, put up three new bridges, and did one bridge rehabilitation. We spent $6.5 million and $1.5, 1.6 million about we received in grant for those projects. Here's a couple, couple bridges that we reconstructed. A lot of our bridges are turning into box culverts, which the farmers especially appreciate. We get rid of the guardrail structure for the larger equipment. They're more easily able to get down the road, and then we don't have as much delineation along the road signs that inevitably get ran over. The snowplows taken out in the winter. that inevitably get ran over, the snowplows taken out in the winter. This is the road south of Colton. Last year, we widened the shoulder and did the in slopes on that section of road. This year, we'll redo the surfacing. This is a picture of micro-surfacing just south of Garrettson a few miles. And then a couple more box culverts we put in. In 2025, we're anticipated to spend $11.4 million on 57 miles of new surfacing, four bridges and one bridge rehab. And that amounts to about $2.3 million in grants between a local federal bridge over here that we're doing and then several big grants that we are receiving from the state to do bridge replacements and bridge rehabs. In addition, there are five purple dots on this map that highlight where the commission awarded rural access funding to townships, which amounted to about $930,000. I would just like to say, I think Highway has the best staff in the county, with the caveat that Judy Workamp also helps us out a lot. She does a good job in the office, making sure we're moving efficiently and getting paperwork processed.
All right, public comment on this agenda item. Commissioner? Questions? Commissioner Blumberg?
Thank you, Jacob, for all that information. And we agree you have wonderful staff. I'm not sure that we can make a statement about if they're better than everyone else. I think the employees countywide are wonderful. I remember when I first learned about the wheel tax being the same for a passenger vehicle as it was for a semi or any larger vehicle, being kind of surprised about that. You mentioned that the impact from overweight vehicles on roads causes a lot more deterioration. Do you have any way to quantify that? Like, how much a lifespan of a road is impacted?
Yeah, when we do structural design for roadways, we take into consideration ESOS, which is equivalent axle loadings. And that documentation shows that an 80,000-pound truck does 8,000 times more damage or is equivalent to 8,000 times more axles than what a 4,000-pound passenger car would be. A 4,000-pound passenger car would be like a Chevy Traverse weighs 4,400 pounds, something like that.
Okay.
8,000 times the impact to the road, is that what you're saying?
Which translates into expense for the county.
Yep.
My follow-up question on that, if we were to look at that scenario of changing the wheel tax, would that impact funding for townships?
It would impact funding for townships. So the process for changing the wheel tax would be to pass an ordinance, which specifies what the new wheel tax is. And then once that goes into effect, a resolution is passed, which identifies where the proportions of the fund goes. The current fund breakout is 90% county, 5% cities within Minnea County, and 5% to townships within Minnea County.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, good morning. Has Minnea County seen a large increase in commercial vehicles in their use? Like, trying to get a handle on the deterioration of roads. It seems, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but it seems to me there's been more damage to the roads over the last decade, last five years.
I mean, I would say trucks continually get heavier and are built to haul heavier loads. One good example is Marmon Energy out of Brandon. We're currently doing oversized permits for them, and they weigh in the order of 230,000 pounds per load, which is a lot of weight. I would say most of the commercial increase that has happened happens around the perimeter of Sioux Falls, not necessarily within the municipalities outside of the county. So a lot of that commercial is still going on city streets or state highways, state interstates.
And are those commercial vehicles with, say, 12 wheels paying the same wheel tax as a four-passenger vehicle?
Yeah, right now, we are maxed out at four wheels. So regardless of the vehicle type, you only pay tax on four wheels.
In contrast to other counties, where do we sit in terms of wheel tax? Are they charging $5 a wheel or are they maxed out at $60? Or where does Lincoln County and some of the other adjacent counties stand on what they charge?
Lincoln County right now is $5 a wheel for 12 wheels, 60 total.
So what could the average citizen expect if the wheel tax goes from $4 a wheel to $5 a wheel?
Yeah, so if you're driving a passenger vehicle that has four wheels, you'd be looking at $4 a vehicle.
And I understand, too, there's a lot of options on the table when it comes to wheel tax, where, for example, we could keep it $4 a wheel for the first four wheels and then increase it for anything above that amount. Would you suggest looking at those options or maybe just doing it across the board in the maintainer budget?
We could, and I have ran scenarios where you just raise the wheel tax above, like, 6,000 GBW, and that generates about $300,000 in revenue. Raising it to 5 and 12 raises about $1 million in revenue. And that's what this wheel tax graph shows. We end up in year 2030 with about 3.1 in reserves, where the theory always that Highway has been to keep enough in the piggy bank so we can fix a bridge over the Big Sioux River, which right now would cost somewhere around $3.5 million. So we want to try to stay north of this 3.1. And I think it would make Chris's job a lot easier if it could just be one set dollar amount across the board.
When do you think the commission would be seriously considering this in a vote? Would it be later this fall or this summer, later this winter?
So timing of it is, my opinion for timing would be based on the big grant awards. Adding one additional dollar for wheel tax would give the Highway Department and the county two additional points to go towards our big grants. We've missed out on a couple of grants in the last few years by less than two points, which is hundreds of thousands, if not a million dollars per grant opportunity for bridge replacements. I'm waiting on a response back from the state right now. But I think as long as it's passed before the first of the year, that we would qualify for that funding. The state runs on a July to June financial budget. June 1st might be a good date to implement a wheel tax, but then not everybody in the county is going to pay the same wheel tax for the current year. So I would suggest probably December 31st or January 1st.
You certainly have a lot to consider in the meantime, so thank you, Jacob.
Jacob, do any property tax dollars go to roads?
None.
None, okay, that was my assumption. In eight years, you think I would have learned that. I think I'm fully on board with the $4 that we have for a vehicle like mine, just a normal private passenger vehicle. And like Commissioner Blumberg had indicated, that 12-plus-wheeled vehicle that's doing 8,000 times the, I don't want to call it damage, but impact to the road that my vehicle does, I think that they should probably be paying a little bit. In favor of keeping the $4 on the first four wheels and looking at $5 on anything over four wheels. So on screens five, four and five. So that one is screen five. That shows, or go back to four, I guess. So the middle line keeping us at the 75.3, what keeps us there? I was a little fuzzy on that.
$4.4 million a year for pavement management costs. So pavement management costs are a combination of chip seal, micro-surfacing, overlaying, and crack sealing.
1.3 million is what keeps us there, additional.
An additional 1.3 million a year.
And if we were to do, or leave the four, the initial four on the private passenger vehicle and go to five through 12 wheels, what does that generate?
About $300,000 a year.
Only $300,000?
Yep, just because the majority of the vehicles in the county are passenger vehicles with four wheels.
So going to five all the way up to 12 wheels generates how much?
Just over a million.
1 million, so we still wouldn't even be hitting the numbers just to maintain our...
Just to maintain pavement management costs. But that's looking at a combination of different kinds of projects that we're working on. So this page five here, slide five, shows what my five-year construction plan is and highway budget all the way out to 2030, whereas we've shown we would have about $3.1 million in reserves if we bumped it up to five and 12.
And we're currently at 9 million, so our reserves have dropped by 2/3?
Our reserves would go to negative 2 million.
At five, up to 12?
It would go to 3.1 at five and 12.
Okay, and at four and then the five over, it would drop to 2.1?
That line isn't on this graph. We would be just below, we'd be just below zero.
Okay. Commissioner Benega, do you have any questions, comments?
I guess I would like to reiterate the comments that Jacob made, is that we haven't changed that rate since 1995. And what we're doing in the county there is nobody that is doing the same kind of construction projects and renovations for the same dollar amount that we have been charging the same rate for 30 years. It makes economic sense for us to stay ahead of what we are projecting as a negative cash balance because if we don't stay ahead of it, we're going to get a lot of the negative feedback, I'm sure, about road conditions.
Okay. So this is the presentation, and we're going to be heading into budget here way too soon, next month initially. So we're probably going to be looking at this proposal for wheel tax. So I see a lot of writing from the journalists in the room, so I imagine this will be public real quick. So Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to ask one more question. Where do overweight vehicles with four wheels fall? Like, I have to admit, I'm not 100% sure, but I think my local FedEx truck might have four wheels, but I'm assuming that's a lot more weight than an average passenger vehicle. Would that, is that correct? I'm thinking of the wear and tear in the outlying areas.
Yeah, garbage trucks would be on a similar pace to what possibly UPS truck is. Garbage trucks are generally very heavy compared to what their axles are. The axle weight on a garbage truck would be maxed out to where a semi is, but you're only looking at two axles on a garbage truck versus up to six or seven or eight on a semi.
So in one of these scenarios that we were discussing, if we were to consider keeping four-wheeled vehicles at $4 per wheel, would there be any way to differentiate between weight? I think at one point you had mentioned 6,000 GBW.
Yeah, you could charge all vehicles over a certain weight class additional per wheel.
Is that not factored into any of the graphs today, right?
It is not.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
Going back to that, so when you say you could charge additional, in addition to the wheel tax?
You would. I believe what Commissioner Blumberg was suggesting was $5 for anything over a certain weight threshold and $4 for everybody.
Under that 6,000, okay, okay, or whatever that number is.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in our neighborhoods, what vehicles provide the most or incur the most damage to the roads? If it's not an average passenger vehicle, all of our purchases that are delivered, all of our school buses have more than four wheels, I think.
And I did review, as Commissioner Heisey had asked, and looked at all the counties. I think there's a public website where you can look at the wheel tax in all the counties around us. It definitely would only put us on par if we did this with what I think every neighboring county around us is currently doing.
I want to say one of the neighboring counties isn't maxed out, but in this area, they're definitely trying to maximize their tax dollars to keep the roads up with the amount of traffic we have.
All righty, there's nothing else. This is an annual presentation, and more to come on this one, I'm sure. All right, thank you very much, Jacob. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign change order number one between Minnea County and BX Civil and Construction for MC 2306, Structure 50, 180, 134, Replacement.
Good morning, Commissioner Jacob Mars, Highway. BX Civil is currently working on a big grant that we have on County Highway 133. This is just north of the Crooks Renner exit. Just on the east side, there's a little access road that's County Highway 133. The project started a month and a half ago, and we've identified a couple of needs out there where we need to move some approaches. So we are looking for some additional funding for this project. We are still under what we've budgeted for this year, as our bids came in very good.
Okay, public comment on this agenda item. What is it specifically going to, Jacob, the $34,600?
Yep, so on this page, it shows there's $26,708 going to Contractor Furnish Borrow. That's an existing bid item, so we're using the same unit price that was bid. That would be to move to field approaches and then other associated items with that, including topsoil, base course, culverts for the approaches. And then we're removing some items out that are no longer necessary, the Type 1 and Type 2 right-of-way fence.
Okay. Commissioner, turn it to you for other questions or action.
Make a motion to approve the change order?
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnea County and Civil Design, Inc., for construction administration of Project MC 2013, Structure 50, 237, 120, Bridge Replacement.
Commissioner Jacob Mars, again, Highway Department. We have a structure that was awarded a big grant. And it was awarded a big grant not in 2025, but in 2024. It didn't fit in our budget until next year. But we are looking at bidding that later this summer so that we could possibly build it over the winter or next year. This agreement is for the construction administration agreement with the design engineer, who is also going to oversee construction. And that would be Civil Design, Inc. out of Brookings. Civil Design, Inc. is also our bridge inspector for the county.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commissioner, action, questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Blumberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Briefing of first quarter 2025 American Rescue Plan expenditures. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. We just want to brief you on our first quarter of 25 expenses that we reported to the U.S. Treasury for our American Rescue Plan grant activity. So for that first quarter, we reported $113,522.01. That brings our total expenditures funded under ARPA to date to just over $36.5 million. And then that gives our remaining balance of yet-to-be-spent dollars to just over $986,000. So just to remind you, we have three projects that are still open. So just to remind you, we have three projects that are still open. They're the three projects on this list that are not shaded. The dollars that are left to be spent are for the emergency response infrastructure improvements, also called the the tower project that the Sheriff's Department is working on to improve those emergency communications in the rural part of the county. Additionally, we're doing the construction of additional courtroom in the courthouse as well as building ventilation improvements for the public defender's office. So we do still project that those projects will be completed within second quarter, whether or not we will have all of the dollars spent in second quarter, if it'll go into third quarter will be determined in the next couple of months. So there will probably be one or two more briefings as far as actual expenditures, and then we'll have to go through a closeout process, which has not yet been communicated by the U.S. Treasury. So a couple more briefings as we go forward, but there will be a final closeout process that we'll have to do as well.
Outstanding. Public comment? All right, just a briefing. Any questions, comments, Commissioner? Commissioner Blumberg?
Thank you. Just a comment to say how much I appreciate the work that you've done in helping us manage this and and keeping us on track as we phase out the ARPA dollars. The whole thing started before my time on the Commission, but I'm very much appreciative for coming into such a well-organized system. So thank you.
The Auditor's Office is happy to help.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Last but not least, legislation legislative session recap. Good morning, Meredith.
Good morning, Commissioners. Meredith Jerko with the Commission Office. So I'm before you today with a recap, kind of summarizing all of the bills that were passed and signed during legislative session that will impact the county, whether that impact is a direct impact or an indirect impact, something that we might just need to be aware of. So just to start off, a bill breakdown. There were 489 bills introduced, 211 bills signed by the governor, two vetoed, and there's approximately 35 to 40 bills that will impact the county either directly or indirectly. Starting off with the Commission Office, some bills that will be on our radar as we look to update policies and change things. House Bill 1059, this just updates the meaning of a of the open meeting requirements for teleconference purposes. So it in a public meeting can occur over teleconference means, but it does not include communication solely to schedule a meeting or confirm attendance availability, because there has been some confusion that if, you know, responding to a calendar invite that you're all on, if that would count as a public meeting. So this just excludes if you're confirming your attendance at a future meeting, that doesn't count as a a public meeting. Senate Bill 74 require the public require the publication and review of an explanation of the open meeting laws of the state. So each year before January 1st, the Attorney General will publish an explanation of the open meeting laws on the website, and then the Commission must annually review that explanation during an official meeting of the year. So we'll be looking to add that into our rules of procedure, just that we have a little line there to say, you know, because of the statute, this will be reviewed at a meeting each year. Senate Bill 84, this was legislation that was supported by the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. It extends the timeframe for filling a vacancy on a Board of Commissioners, and this extends the deadline to 35 days or until the conclusion of the second regular meeting after the vacancy occurs, whichever is later. So that would just give us a little bit of time to make sure that we have a qualified candidate to fill that vacancy until the next election. And then finally, House Bill 1218, I know this one was in the news a lot. This just changes what restrictions county can put on the can put on firearm carrying on county campuses. So we'll be working with the state's Attorney's Office just to check our current policy and make the necessary changes so that it aligns with the law. So we'll be working on that and that policy update will be before you sometime in the future. Property taxes, I know I've talked a lot about property taxes, but just wanted to reiterate again, the one property tax bill that was passed was Senate Bill 216. This limits the increase of the total assessed value of owner-occupied, single-family dwellings to 3% for five years. Just for anyone listening, I just want to continue to reinforce and drive home the point. This is not a cap on individual house assessments of 3%. This is on the county's total assessed value for owner-occupied, single-family dwellings. So there may still be some increases that are higher than 3% lower, but it's on the the total value, not on individual properties. It also limits growth to 3% for five years, and improvements made to owner-occupied homes that are less than 40% of the total value of the property will not be considered growth. They will still be considered reappraisal when looking at the value of a property, but they will just be that improvement will be categorized as reappraisal instead of growth. And finally, the the other highlight of that bill was increasing the income and home value caps for the disabled and elderly freeze property tax program. So for the income amounts, the single-member it, a single-member household, it increases from 35,055 a year. For multi-member households, 45 to 65, and it increases that home value cap of 500,000 to 500,000, excuse me. And just wanted to note that there was a resolution passed to provide an interim study. So a summer study on property taxes, property taxes, specifically the with a focus on the owner-occupied area. It'll include the task force will include 16 lawmakers, a representative from the Bureau of Finance and Management, and a representative from the Governor's Office. It'll look at local government spending and our funding sources. I will note, just since it's been in the news, Governor Roden did have a proposal that he publicly announced as a suggestion to this task force, which is the homeowner tax relief proposal, and that would allow for counties to impose a county sales tax of 0.5%. So again, that is just Governor Roden's proposal to the summer study. The summer study task force may come together and they may find other areas of ways that they may, different laws that they may want to pass or things that they can implement. So there's a lot up in the air and even in addition to the summer study and in addition to the summer study, Senate Bill 216 still has a lot of unknowns with implementation. We are waiting for some crucial answers from the state on how that's going to look for our equalization office. And and how that all, I'm sure as you all just sat through the Board of Equalization, that, you know, some of those changes will will play a really big role. So our the Commission Office will continue to come before the Commissioners and give these updates as we receive more information from the state on how a lot of these things in Senate Bill 216 will be implemented. A couple of bills here that are related to funding appropriations from the state or our revenue. So there are a few bills on here that were passed. It doesn't mean that, you know, for sure, those things will be will be implemented. Some of them are, you know, they permit an office to do something. Senate Bill 72 revised the pair of autopsy costs in certain circumstances. That would be if an individual committed a crime and died in the commission of that crime, you know, the coroner could go after their estate to pay for their autopsy. So that's not like a surefire thing that that will always pan out. But a couple of ones I wanted to highlight here, Senate Bill 37, I know I've I've mentioned it a lot in my updates. That eliminates the sunset on the 911 surcharge. So originally, I believe in July of 26, the 911 surcharge was supposed to go from $2 back down to $1.25. So that completely removes it, so that surcharge will remain at $2. That is really great for our metro communications for their budget and helping their fund their operations. Senate Bill 90 as well, that was supported by South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, clarifying per divisions regarding tax deeds. It includes that county liens must be paid before the surplus proceeds of a tax deed sale are returned to the prior owners. So before, there are a couple of other provisions of things that had to be paid. The only update to that law is that it adds in county liens, which is good for us to clear out some of those liens. Quick note on eminent domain, House Bill 1052 was passed. And that is some language in the law that notwithstanding the provision of any other law, a person may not exercise the right of eminent domain to acquire right-of-way for, construct, or operate a pipeline for the preponderant purpose of transporting carbon oxide. So I know that that has been an issue that has been kind of top of mind for some other counties, but I know that we've, you know, that's come across our desk, so I just wanted to to give an update there. Treasurer's Office, a couple of bills that impacts their office. Senate Bill 131 is to establish an electronic system for vehicle titles. The bill states that it must be established on or before July 2026. So we do have the state has some time to kind of figure out which provider they're going to go with and how that's going to look, but just something we want to be aware of. We recently had the new registration platform introduced in the Treasurer's Office. So hopefully, you know, all of the the bugs can get fixed with that one before a new electronic system is is implemented. But that's something that we'll need to be aware of as some of the processes may change. In addition, Senate Bill 45 impose a motor vehicle technology fee. This is an additional $2 fee for motor vehicle transactions, and it will be deposited into the motor vehicle fund. The bill didn't directly state exactly what's that's going to be used for. Since it is a technology fee, I can assume that it's going to be used for, you know, the implementation of this new electronic system for vehicle titles. So while that money may not be directly coming back to our, or excuse me, to our Treasurer's Office, hopefully, it's a step in the right direction to make sure that our Treasurer's Office has a good electronic system for these vehicle titles and alleviate some of that administrative burden. Elections, so there were 20 total election bills signed and one vetoed. I don't have all the election bills on here because some of them have to do with campaign finance reports, so that doesn't necessarily impact the work of the county. The one that was vetoed was House Bill 1169 to modify the signature requirement for a petition to initiate a constitutional amendment. I'll give a brief overview of these bills. I just want to note at the top that for many of the bills, there are some technical questions that will hopefully be answered in the coming months. Whether that be for, you know, implementation, coordinating with municipalities and school districts on some of those election things. So a lot of moving parts that we'll be getting answers to hopefully soon. Quite a few bills that concern residency. The the two that I want to highlight, House Bill 1066 and House Bill 1208. So 1066 revises residency requirements for the purposes of voter registration. And that defines a residence as an actual fixed permanent dwelling that an individual lives in, and the residence needed is 30 consecutive days. And so with that, kind of goes hand in hand, House Bill 1208 designates an individual using the address of a mail forwarding service or post office box when applying to register as a voter or vote by absentee ballot as a federal voter. So for those folks that do not meet the residency requirements, but use a post office box, they will be able to vote with a federal-only ballot. So that will be president, our one House District and Congressional, or in our two Senate seats, thank you, that they can that they can vote for. So those are two of the big ones. And then in addition, some of the other ones, Senate Bill 68 just affirms being a citizen in the United States and the penalties if a noncitizen votes. And then kind of on that, the note of questions to be answered and things coming up. Senate Bill 75 requires indication of United States citizenship status on a motor vehicle license or permit on not and on a non-driver identification card. So that one was so that it says citizen, it makes it a little bit easier for those election workers when they are handed an ID. You know, if they are handed an ID without that, they would then know the person's not eligible to vote, but that's one of those areas of don't know the timeline on when that new license design will come out, when it'll be implemented, if it'll be a rolling thing for folks getting new licenses, things like that. Kind of some bills that go together, whether it's important dates with the election or race, how races look on ballots. So House Bill 1130 provides permissible dates for municipal and school district elections. So this changes the school district and municipal races to June and November so that they align with, you know, county and federal and state elections. So I know that Auditor Anderson has already started coordinating with the city of Sioux Falls and the school districts just as the that bill goes into effect and those changes, just to make sure that there's good coordination there, because that's going to look different from their their current school district election and municipal dates. So that's that's the big one there. And then Senate Bill 89 repeal the requirement that judicial officers be listed on a separate nonpolitical ballot. So that's just another thing that would be, you know, another race on our ballots. And then election operations, there's kind of a few here. But there were some that relate to the notice of the county's canvass and post-election audit, that being posted on the Secretary of State's website. Modifying the provisions pertaining to the compensation of a recount board, so just changing some of those dollar amounts. But all things that we will just be, you know, working on and making sure that if there's any operations that we need to change internally, that we're aware of those and and working together with the necessary offices to make sure we're good for that. Other bills, these are kind of three. House Bill 1194 authorize the cooperation of counties for purposes of operating an Office of County Director of Equalization. This was in South Dakota Association of County Officials sponsored or supported legislation. This is this helps for some smaller counties that it may be hard to have a director of equalization in both of those county offices. It opens up the opportunity for cooperation there across counties. And I'll just call out House Bill 1074, that just modifies the individuals eligible to sign an affidavit of homelessness. So that just includes a couple extra people to that list. School districts, homeless liaison, school counselors, school nurse, social worker. So just a few more people that are eligible to sign that when I'm going to receive a birth certificate. I'm available for questions. I will just say, though, that there's a lot of bills, tried to go through them concisely, but we'll be sharing all this information with the department heads, especially where there is applicable follow-up that is needed. As some of these laws need to be implemented, whether that be, again, changing policies or procedures. So we will be before you again throughout the coming months with those things that may need to change or alter, just to make sure that we are in a good spot before these bills go into effect. But yeah, I will stand by for questions.
All right, public comment on this item? Questions? Commissioner Blumberg?
Just a comment, thank you. I really appreciate the time that you've spent making this as concise as you have been able to. It helps quite a bit when we're looking at such a large number of bills that will impact the county. Thank you for your time and your work on it. Thanks.
I'd like to mirror those comments and, you know, thank you for keeping us abreast of these bills. It's no easy task with hundreds of bills that are in peer, and so many of which pertain to the counties. I did want to ask a question about Senate Bill 5 regarding the fees that the sheriff can now start charging. It might be a better question. be a better question for Sheriff Milstead, but, uh, just curious if you knew what kind of fees would be charged for services and what kind of services and for, for how much and how, how that might impact the sheriff's office budget.
Yep. So, so you are correct that this does, um, permit the sheriff to charge a fee for service. So that will be, um, in his decision-making realm. Um, but it permits him to charge a fee for service of process whether the service is completed or not. So that's kind of the, um, the change there is, um, I believe before you could only charge it if the service was completed.
Okay. More on the budget, I'm sure. Okay. Moving on then to opportunity for public comment. Uh, we allow 30 minutes, five minutes per individual, and on any non-agenda item, please make sure that you signed in and stated your county residence. Morning.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, county auditor. And I just wanted to take a moment to make sure that the public is aware that the Sioux Falls School District election is coming up May 13th. Um, absentee voting begins on April 28th. This year, absentee voting will be taking place in our office on first floor. Um, and so I've been trying to post signage for that, and the school district is also trying to make people aware of that information, um, that we will be the ones, uh, conducting the absentee voting. Also, the deadline for registration is the same day, but at 5:00 PM. So April 28th at 5:00 PM, you need to be registered to vote in order to vote in the May 13th school dis- school board election. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Leah. All right. Moving on then to commission liaison reports. Commissioner Weinberg?
Thank you. Um, just a reminder, we have a meeting with, a joint meeting with the city of Sioux Falls later today. Um, and then also the SJC, the Safety and Justice Challenge, uh, group, implementation group will be meeting this afternoon to discuss, um, work the, the different community partners have been engaged in, just on an ongoing basis, and also to get a little bit of a recap on the, um, conference that several delegates from the county and those other community organizations attended last week. And I think that's it for me.
Anybody else? I have a few. Thank you for mentioning the joint meeting at 5 o'clock today. Um, yesterday at 4 o'clock, I attended, um, Metro Communications Quarterly Update. Metro Communications became under the city's purvey here a few months ago last year. Basically, it made it a much better operation from what it had been. Um, yesterday, we took action to promote Amy Chase to be the manager. Amy has 25 years of Metro Communication. I think that's an outstanding, um, promotion for her and recognizes the work that she's done. Um, staffing at Metro Communications is full, which has not happened in forever. Um, they, Amy and, um, some, one or two of her staff had attended meetings down in, I believe Orlando, National, um, Association for Multi- or for PSAPS, um, Public Safety Answering Points. And, um, nobody else is in that situation nationally. We have a very good organization. It's well-run. We have great people working there. And to say that some public safety answering places, 911 type places, I mean, there's places that are at 50% staffing. Um, so we, we are truly in a good place. Um, learned that we have four times or quadruple redundancy on our communications. So if you call in and one line's down, we have four different ways where calls can be gotten into the 911 call service. And, um, Meredith had brought up Senate Bill 37. Thank you to the legislators. I think that was one of the least controversial of things that got done, and it was a huge impact in my mind to keeping property taxes done. Just that one of those small things that can be done to keeping property taxes down because that will have a big impact, um, long-term on that. Tomorrow at 10:30, I am going to be chairing the Link Board. We have our semi, or bimonthly every other month, Link Board meeting. Um, from there, I'm going to run to the Chamber Board meeting, which is monthly. I am skipping the Southeastern Behavioral Health Board meeting. Tom is going to take that one for me. Um, we are new to that board. And then I think Jen is doing the elected officials meeting at noon tomorrow, correct?
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention that, um, noon tomorrow, the county this year is hosting that, uh, lunch club group that meets between city and school and county. Um, so tomorrow, we are meeting to learn more about the juvenile detention center and the work that the county is engaged in there. And then if I could also add one more thing that I missed.
Please.
Um, this past week, um, the announcement was made official that we will be, um, kind of suffering a loss in the library system. Uh, the director of the library, Jody Fick, has announced her resignation, her retirement coming up in June this summer. And Jody has been the director of the library, um, for, since I think 2017, but has been involved in our libraries for, I think, four decades. Um, so sh- she has been an asset to the, to the library system previously as county, and then as we merged and became Sioux Land. Um, her leadership has been instrumental in helping, uh, as we continue to grow and provide more services and, uh, engage the community. So just wanted to mention that, uh, we will be trying to grapple with what life will look like going forward without Jody.
All right. Um, yeah, Jody's retirement is well-deserved and four decades. She's only 45 or something. I hardly believe that. So, all right. Um, lastly, um, Commissioner Heisey and I this morning met with the Public Defenders Advisory Board. Um, retired Judge Setliff was elected chair of that vor- board. That's, I think I'm saying her as a Setliff or Setliff? Yeah. So is now chair of the advisory board. Um, things are well on track. Um, Tracy Smith and her team are doing a, I think, a great job of managing that operation. Tracy's been there 25 years. I think there's 27 attorneys roughly. When Tracy started, there were, I think, nine. Um, and a lot of our, um, attorneys locally, including Daniel Hager, started in the Public Defender's Office. So, um, great place for people who want trial attorney experience to get started. They're always looking at hiring. I know that, that things are looking pretty good, but we do have a problem that really needs to be addressed, and that's on space needs. And I asked Mark Krenz to be here if anybody had questions. They need space for three additional offices by August, and we're really struggling with where are we going to put people? They're going to need nine additional offices by the year 2027, so within two years. So they're really trying to scramble to figure out, you know, we've got people coming in. Um, they've all been budgeted for and approved. They are in the annex across the way, the building, uh, to the east of this building. Um, we spent a lot of money getting that building, you know, where they could actually use it functionally, but they're still running out of space. So, Mark, any comments? Are we, are we, do we have progress in where we can find space for, and who's kind of, who's working primarily with them on, on this space issue?
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krenz, Facilities Department. Yeah, I've been in contact with Tracy Smith. Um, we have looked at her building. Obviously, there's really nowhere else to, you know, retrofit in there other than the conference room, which would only grab them a couple offices, and then they're obviously out of conference room space. Um, we have looked at the Public Safety Building, and temporarily that will work, um, for her to house a few staff out of there. It's not ideal setup, but it, it's, it's functional. Um, and then we have been looking at, you know, some lease space. I have reached out to local broker, um, waiting on a response to see what's available, what's closed, and costs on that. So that's where we're at currently.
Okay. So they should be kind of working directly through you for this then?
Yeah. If they're looking for additional space around here, and I'm just helping with some lease space that's currently available close to the downtown campus.
Okay. I told them I'd bring it up at the meeting, so thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Cole, anything to add on that?
Uh, yeah, I suppose I just wanted to add, um, it's a pathway program, um, that's through the University of South Dakota, I believe, and the, and the state. Um, they were offered five positions, but because of space constraints, um, they only took two. So, and with the immediate need of, like Commissioner Karski noted, um, three offices by August of this year, um, we've got to take some action, you know, sooner than later, um, on this. So, um, I'd be happy to see where we go with this, so.
Ironically, the Public Safety Building is the old jail, and we're putting our public defenders in jail. So.
Little irony there, yeah.
Little irony there, so.
I, I did want to mention something a little bit off-topic if.
Please.
If it's allowed. Um, so I did meet with the Treasurer's Office with, uh, Ms. Chris Swanson, and, uh, we went through the budget, and things seem pretty well on track. Not a whole lot of differences from, from last year, uh, in their budget. But I did want to note, uh, with the change, um, the governor's bill with the property tax thresholds, that, um, she's probably, um, well, she's projecting that she's going to need some additional part-time staff, uh, sometime next year to handle, um, the no doubt, uh, the increase in, um, applications that individuals would be, um, submitting to her office. Right now, it's been mostly her, um, handling those applications. Um, I, I think with the number that we're going to receive, um, it's going to far exceed her ability to handle. So, um, we're thinking about down the road.
Commissioner Benning, got anything to add?
The only thing that hasn't been mentioned is that we have received multiple proposals for campus master planning. Uh, that's a long-term, uh, goal to enhance and plan for the growth that we're talking about currently. Uh, those will be reviewed in the next few days, and, uh, hopefully, uh, be bringing that to a commission vote in the near future.
Definitely. All right. I'm going to call this meeting a success because the deputy auditor did not have to send me any notes saying I didn't do something. So thank you very much, Kim. All right. We have executive session. Um, immediately proceeding next door, so I'm going to look for a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law, 1, 25, 2, 1, 3, 4, and 6. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 As aye, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.